In the absence of the mayor and the mayor pro tem, I’m calling the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the City of Victorville Water District to order. This meeting will be adjourned to 6:30 PM in these chambers. I will now reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District. At this time, it would be appropriate for the council members that are present to elect a presiding officer for the meeting.
I’ll second your... No, yours.
Oh, thank you.
Well, you have the most experience, so we felt that you’d be the best to run the meeting.
I’d love to spread the wealth around. Well, then, I will... My acting capacity as the presiding officer of the meeting indicate that all of the various entities, the City Council, the Redevelopment Agency, the Water District, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, the Library Board, all of those meetings are opened, and the first item of business on each of those agendas is public comment. I’ll invite anyone in the audience who’s here that wishes to speak under public comment to do so. You’ll be limited to three minutes. Anyone here who wishes to speak under public comment? I have one card. Mike Hoke.
I just get a little upset here about the... Every time I read about the Foxborough project, selling equipment, I’ve talked to the City Council, I’ve talked to the city manager, I’ve talked to purchasing, about different avenues we can go. We’re in the auction business, we sell it all over the world. Internet companies all over the world. We sell millions of dollars, millions of dollars every month. We sell for the state of California, we sell for PG&E, but somehow here, the City of Victorville wants to do it in a little way, and I think that’s why we’re in trouble like we are. They want to do it in a little way. Let’s do it a modern way. Let’s do it, let’s catch up with everybody else. There’s lots of new avenues out there to go. Nobody wants to even talk to us. That’s all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hoke. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak under public comment? Can I pass these up to you guys? Clerk, please. Hearing no other interest in public comment, I will now ask the members of the council to go into closed session. The closed session items have been set forth in the agenda, but I will ask the city attorney, Mr. D. Bortnowsky, to structure the closed session.
Thank you, Councilmember Caldwell. You’re correct. The items, items two and three, both pertain to real property negotiations. The locations of the property are listed along with the negotiating, the negotiating parties. With respect to item four, that is closed session pursuant to potential for litigation, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9b3b. The facts associated with that pertain to the contract that we had previously entered into with General Electric. We have been deemed in breach of that contract, and on an ongoing basis, I need to update you as to the status. Waiting litigation. If there is any reportable action, we will come out and report that action.
Now adjourned to the closed session, and we’ll reconvene at seven o’clock. We’ll call this regularly scheduled council meeting to order, along with all of the other entities, the Airport Authority, the Rail Authority, the Redevelopment Agency, the Water District, and the Library. I’m pinch-hitting for the mayor and the mayor pro tem tonight. I drew the short straw, so you have to suffer through with me tonight. The custom in this council is we begin every meeting with an invocation. Tonight, it will be led by Pastor Larry White from the Horizon Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our chief of police.
Thank you. I would like to just open by reading a quote from a very popular song that’s out right now. It’s called “God of This City,” and the words go like this, “You’re the God of this city. You’re the king of these people. You’re the Lord of this nation. You’re the light in this darkness. You’re the hope to the hopeless. You’re the peace to the restless.” And then the chorus goes like this, “Greater things have yet to come; greater things are still to be done in this city. Would you bow your hearts and heads with me as we come to the Lord in prayer? Father God, we come to you and thank you so much for your many blessings that you have given us. Even through adversity, and even through challenge and difficulty, you give us your sustaining power, and so we thank you for that sustaining power today. I pray for these elected officials, and for their leadership, and for their direction, not only here tonight, but throughout the entire year. Lord, I pray that their thoughts be your thoughts, that their words be your words, and that their wisdom be your wisdom. And finally, I pray for this city, and make this declaration today. Father God, you are the God of this city, Victorville, and we know and expect that there are greater things that have yet to come, and greater things still to be done in this city. We thank you, and we praise you in your name. Amen.
We want to extend a warm welcome to each and every one of you here this evening. We appreciate your being involved in the affairs of your city, and we hope that, in spite of the weather, that everybody will get home safe and sound at the conclusion of this meeting. Before we go into the formal agenda, we have two special items. The first is a presentation to be made to the city from the High Desert Youth Football Club and football team, and I understand that there are representatives here to make a presentation. You may, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for letting us attend. My name is Deborah Renteria. I’m an executive board member with the Victorville Cowboys Youth Football and Cheer Program. This is just a small sampling of who we are. We participated in the Victorville area last year, and what we wanted to do on behalf of the program was to present a thank you plaque to the city. We had many occasions to come into many of your city offices and utilize your fields, some of your buildings, and a lot of your personnel helped us to do that. So we wanted to give a plaque to the city, as well as give something to the mayor. Just a little, just a little hat and a shirt, just a token of appreciation. And, oh, by the way, we brought home four Super Bowls last year, so we did Victorville proud, and we hope to do that again this year. So we will be in the area again this year. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And we want to know if we could get a picture with the kids?
Sure can.
Oh, no, not the dolls.
Where do you want us to? Are you in the middle or right there? Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
The other questions are comments? If not, I’ll open the public hearing on these two proposed resolutions. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council?
I have a date that we’ll be sending out these notices for the people to respond.
I am sir, Mr. Coggs.
Where is Reggie? We will find out, make sure. We ran into a problem, as you know, last time we were getting the calendar. We’ll make sure that calendar is right up to following the code of when we send it and all that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I’ll open the public hearing on proposed resolution number 10008 and proposed resolution 10004. These are resolutions, does it require the reading of the title?
No, it does not.
Anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con? Mr. Laws?
I used to work for a water district, so I know when pipes break, they have to be repaired. But I’d like to know personally, are we going to, is that another fee we’re going to add on to the water people, or for the citizens of Victorville? Or what’s the actual cost going to be, and what are we doing?
It’s a standby and availability fee to help pay the capital cost. It’s for individuals who are not connected to the meter but has water available to their property. And so it’s a $10 per parcel or per acre for that vacant land that is not connected to the water system but has it there and can connect to it. So it’s the right to connect to it, and it’s an annual fee of $10 per acre or portion thereof where they can connect to the...
Well, you know a fee is a tax. You know that. Some people say it isn’t, but it is. Okay, in that case, so you’re saying each time they connect, the first time, they’re going to pay a fee? Or they’re going to be paying it once a month, or once a year, or what?
Once you connect to the water system, you have a meter put in, and then you just, you pay the water rates from that point on.
Okay. Now, I voted against the city when it came to taking over our old water district because they had a lot of money in that district, and I knew a few people in that, and I thought they did a good job. It was not for that. How are we doing on the money that we received from that district when we took it over as a city? Do we still got plenty of money left for that, out of that district, out of that water district?
What I would rather do...
Or do we squander it somewhere?
What I’d rather do is to get your name and address, and have the water district manager send you a complete financial breakdown, accounting for all the funds.
Okay. I want to see the city be as very, as it can to be tax, less taxes, less, you know, less stuff. We’ve got people who’ve moved up here, they’re retiring now, and they’re coming here because of the situation is much better up here than down below. We’ve been up here, I think, 12 or 15 years, and I just want to see if we can, you know, we do a very good thing...
...for anyone who wishes to address the council on any subject that is within our purview or responsibility or jurisdiction. And you'll be limited to three minutes. We ask that you fill out the cards, the white cards that are available in the foyer and pass them to the city clerk. And if you wish to speak later on any item that's on the agenda, again, we ask that you fill out the cards and pass them to the city clerk. The reason we request the cards is so that we'll have the contact information necessary if what you share with us or ask of us requires that we get in touch with you after tonight. At the public comment session, because it's not an agendized item, the council, as a general rule, does not comment or respond to items that come up under Agenda Item Number One, the public comment. First card I have is Jerry Laws. Laws? Oh, I have a card indicating you want to speak.
Well.
These... You want to speak on every item? Is that what you want to do?
On the right.
All right.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Chuck Hanson. I live at 22113 Sioux Road in Apple Valley. And I'm here again because May is National Bike Month. I'm sure some of you remember me from last year. And once again, we're asking for your help. We know that there are a lot of traffic problems. We know that there are many people in the high desert who would help to ease this problem by getting out of their cars and riding a bicycle. We know that they do not want to do that because there are no safe places to ride. We are, again, providing that opportunity for you to help these people realize their desire. We are supporting a bicycle ride on Bear Valley Road on Monday evening, May 3, 2010, at 6:00 p.m. The ride will begin at Lowe's Parking Lot, west of the 15 freeway, and end at the Jess Ranch Marketplace in Apple Valley. The riders are requesting that you listen to their request for bike lanes, and please join us in this ride so you can see the need. Last year, we had a couple mayors from this area in Apple Valley do the ride. I would like to see all the mayors. And they're not here tonight, so please pass the word on to them. And even all the city council members, join us in this ride, just so you can see the enthusiasm, the excitement that goes on. This is the fourth year. The first year, we had seventeen, eighteen. Second year, we had around sixty. And last year, we had around one hundred and eighty. So, please join us.
Thank you. Next card is Dorothy Miller.
The problem I'm having is some of us are backing some of those people that are going to be running for city council. But you know what? They're not here to find out what's really going on in this city. And I'd like to know why. So I think who's backing who should be talking to them and have them come to the city meetings and find out exactly what is going on. Because if you get a seat up there, you've got to know what's going on. Thank you.
Miller, that concludes the cards for public comment. I will now simultaneously deal with the library, the rail authority, and the air authorities' consent calendar items with one motion.
Move for approval?
Second.
Seconded, may we vote? That's unanimous. That concludes the library agenda and the rail agenda. As to the airport authority agenda, there is one remaining item. That is item number four, which is a request to approve the use agreement with the Boeing Company for the lease of SCLA for flight test of the Boeing 747-800 aircraft. Questions or comments? Not a motion would be in order.
Move for approval?
Second.
Now go to the redevelopment agency agenda. Item three is the consent calendar. Fair motion?
Still moved?
Second.
Item four is a request to affirm the authorization to execute the grant deeds for the disposition of NSP real properties and to authorize the Director of Economic Development as the authorized signer of all resale-related transaction documents to include the grant deeds for the following rehabilitated properties: APN 3104-31122, 3104-44101, 3104-44124, and 3104-35201.
For approval?
Second.
Item five, request to approve a silver sponsorship for the High Desert Opportunity 2010 event in the amount of $10,000. Fair motion?
Still moved? Okay, second.
Seconded. Water District Agenda. The public hearing for Resolutions 10003 and 10004 dealing with the establishment of the proceedings for the levying of standby and availability charges for District Number One and District Number Two. Before I open the public hearing on these two proposed resolutions, are there any questions or comments from members of the council?
Do you have a date that we'll be sending out these notices for the people to respond?
Lamson or Mr. Cox?
We will find out, make sure. We ran into a problem, as you know, last time of getting the calendar. We'll make sure that calendar is right up to following the code on when we send it and all that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll open the public hearing on Proposed Resolution Number 10008 and Proposed Resolution 10004. These are resolutions. Does it require the reading of the title?
No, it does not.
Anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con? Mr. Laws?
I used to work for a water district, so I know when pipes break, they have to be repaired. But I'd like to know personally, are we going to... Is that another fee we're going to add on to the water people for the citizens of Victorville? Or what's the actual cost going to be and what are we doing?
It's a standby and availability fee to help pay the capital cost. It's for individuals who are not connected to the meter but has water available to their property. And so it's a $10 per parcel or per acre for that vacant land that is not connected to the water system but has it there and can connect to it. So it's the right to connect to it, and it's an annual fee of $10 per acre or portion thereof where they can connect to the...
Well, you know a fee is a tax. You know that. Some people say it isn't, but it is. Okay, in that case, so you're saying each time they connect, the first time, they're going to pay a fee? Are they going to be paying it once a month or once a year or what?
Once you connect to the water system, you have a meter put in, and then you just pay the water rates from that point on.
Okay. Now, I voted against the city when it came to taking over our old water district because they had a lot of money in that district, and I knew a few people in it, and I thought they did a good job. I was not for that. How are we doing on the money that we received from that district when we took it over as a city? Do we still got plenty of money left for that, out of that district, out of that water district?
What I would rather do...
Or do we squander it somewhere?
What I'd rather do is to get your name and address and have the water district manager send you a complete financial breakdown accounting for all the funds.
Okay. I want to see the city be as very as it can to be tax... Less taxes, less, you know, less stuff. We've got people who've moved up here, they're retiring now, and they're coming here because of the situation is much better up here than down below. We've been up here, I think, 12 or 15 years. And I just want to see if we can, you know, we do a very good thing. We have our prayer. We have our pledge of allegiance. So that means that we are definitely in the right direction. So I want to make sure we get these taxes cut down. We don't want to go like the city of Los Angeles, who raised fees, raised taxes, and now are still asking for more money. We want to live within our means, and we senior citizens are, and military, are living within our means and are cutting back. We want to make sure the city stays, you know, gets itself out of its financial problem and do what needs to be done. We should be number one in this valley when it comes to that service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laws. Anyone else who wishes to speak for or against, pro or con, on the two proposed resolutions? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel?
Move for approval?
Is that for both resolutions?
Yes, please. I'm sorry.
Been moved and seconded to approve both resolutions. The consent calendar, item four.
For approval?
Second.
Item five, a request to amend the service provider agreement with Woodward and Curran for additional construction engineering services and increase the not-to-exceed amount of $128,100 for the SCLA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant.
For approval?
Second.
Item six is a request to approve Change Order Two to increase Kelly's underground construction contract with the reclaimed water line to elevated tank by $74,030. Item seven is discussion and possible action regarding the Adelanto Free Production Allowance. Mr. Cox?
I want to ask our general manager, the Water District, Reggie Lamson, to give a presentation on this item. This goes back to the '90s when they closed George Air Force Base. And because of this very sensitive subject, staff felt that the council should be brought up to date on regard to the free production allowance, what it means, how it's being used, and the next steps that need to be taken.
Reggie? Before we go there, I would ask this question of the city attorney. The note on the dais indicates that it requires a two-thirds vote of four council members, which we do not have tonight. And there's a suggestion that the matter must be continued to May 4, 2010. With that in mind, would it be appropriate for me to simply open this meeting, take testimony from anyone in the audience who may wish to be heard, but delay the staff presentation until we have the full council?
That is, I believe, on a different agenda item. That is with respect to the resolution necessity, which is on the city council agenda. This is still the Water District.
No, I agree with the council.
So there's no problem proceeding with this item.
Right, then, Mr. Lamson.
This actually started when the Water Master, Mojave Water Agency, started the procedure of adjudicating the basin. City of Adelanto had a dispute with George Air Force Base on who owned the 3,433 acre-feet of base annual production. City of Adelanto filed a suit, and then in the end of '95, beginning of '96, they stipulated to the adjudication with the Mojave Water Agency and agreed to just leave it in the adjudication as a joint ownership between Adelanto and the Air Force Base, or it's the Air Force Base's successor, Victor Valley, or Victorville, rather. And the court said that until it was resolved, Adelanto could receive the benefits of that 3,433 acre-feet of base annual production. Two years later, City of Victorville and City of Adelanto entered into an MOU. That was in December of '97, where they allocated that 3,433, 60% to the George Air Force Base or the City of Victorville, and 20% to the City of Adelanto and 20% to the Federal Bureau of Prisons. At that time, City of Adelanto served the water to SCLA, and which in turn served the water to the prison. So until, from '97 to 2003, they were... They were deservant of getting that free production allowance because they were supplying the water to all three entities, the City of Adelanto, SCLA, and the prison. In 2003, Adelanto started having some problems with some of their wells, and they requested that the Victor Valley Water District supplement the supply to George Air Force Base. They agreed to give Victor Valley Water District the free production allowance of all the water that we supplied, the base and/or the prison. Since then, we've... Since around 2006, 2007, we started supplying water to the SCLA and the prison. And Adelanto stopped serving because they increased in population, their supply, they didn't have adequate supply to serve SCLA and the prison, and had asked that we serve them. Then we merged in 2007 with the city and have served ever since. Over the last two years or better, we've been negotiating with the City of Adelanto to make them go by the '97 MOU to where we would get the free production allowance that the MOU had allocated to the SCLA and to the Federal Bureau of Prisons. And we had been serving that water for several years. We've made numerous attempts and had numerous meetings with them, and we're at a bit of a stalemate with them. We have a difference of opinion. We feel that MOU is quite clear in that the 80%, 60% to this SCLA and 20% to the prison is what we have the right to apply to our free production allowance that is due to the Water Master every June. This year, that free production allowance is worth $636,000. And that's still up in the air. That's due in June. What we're proposing is that we submit to the Water Master the documentation and the MOU that was signed by both mayors, City of Adelanto and Victorville, and pay everything up to that, less the $636,000, and let the Water Master determine whether or not those documents are correct. And if they have to, most Water Master decisions are, if you can't come to an agreement, they go to the Riverside Court, Judge Kaiser's court, and they make a determination on who owns those water rights. So that's what staff has recommended.
Questions or comments from members of the council?
Are we asking... Excuse me. Are we asking now that we just send a letter to the Water Master with this information?
That would be the first step.
Yeah.
Are we going to do... Is that what you're asking us to do?
We believe, based, when we go back and read the disposition from the United States government in regard to Adelanto's assertion, their appeal, and the unresolved of what's occurred, it's clear in the adjudication that the judge felt that the Water Master should resolve this and make that adjudicated water rights available to the legal entities after the military had left the base. Because the federal government does not submit themselves to a state court. Victorville has annexed the base, we have VITA, and the United States government is not involved in any of the water, the water rights. The dispute can be handled easily by the Water Master, and we would think that that would be the first step, is to make a request for the Water Master to make the determination based upon all the records that exist. And that would be the first step, we believe. Attorney, we've talked with the attorney on this issue. By doing it this way, we require the actual agency that was involved in the adjudication to back up and read the documents, to reaffirm the position, maybe make us aware if there's errors that we see. Will not involve a lot of legal expense, and it avoids a court action. If this can't be resolved, I think it was probably acknowledged, however, that Judge Kaiser's court, Judge Kaiser is now retired, but that court retained jurisdiction. If you're on the water rights or how they're to be allocated, it would, we believe, go back into that court. We'd like to avoid that. And by going through the Water Master appears to be a good way to mediate this without a lot of legal involvement.
Fair motion to proceed with the staff recommendation?
Aye.
Second.
That concludes the Water District Agenda. We will now go to the City Council Agenda, and we have one revision, which would be the public hearing, item number three. I previously indicated this item requires a quorum for council members. Question and the request is that this matter be continued to May 4, 2010, when we have a full council. But open the public hearing and afford anyone in the audience who's here specifically to address this item to do so, and then their comments would be carried over and become a part of the public record at the formal hearing on May 4, 2010.
Would be appropriate would be to open the public hearing and receive any testimony and keep the public hearing open and continue it to that May 4 date.
Then, Council Agenda Item Three, dealing with Proposed Resolution Number 10031, will be continued till May 4, but I will open the public hearing and invite anyone in the audience who's here specifically to address item three. Hearing none, I'll leave the public hearing open, and we will go to Agenda Item Four, which is, again, a public hearing to hear arguments for or against adopting a mitigated negative declaration with a de minimis finding for the Victor Valley College Transfer Point Facility and mitigation monitoring and reporting program and filing a notice of determination within five working days of recommended approval. Questions or comments from the council before we open the public hearing? Not a open the public hearing on Agenda Item Four. Invite anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, on Agenda Item Number Four, dealing with the mitigated negative declaration with a de minimis finding for the Victor Valley College Transfer Point Facility. Anyone wishing to be heard? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearings close, Mr. Laws. Motion would be in order. Item Five is the consent calendar. Motion would be in order.
Move for approval. Screens are too slow.
End to Item Six, request to adopt Proposed Resolution 10029, which would authorize the city manager or his designee to execute contracts for the supply of electricity and superseding Resolution Number 08126. Questions or comments from the council? Not a motion would be in order.
Approval?
End to Item Seven, request to ratify the adoption of Resolution Number 09051, corrected, which deals with the approval of tentative tract PLN 0700123, which would allow for a 319-lot, single-family residential subdivision in conjunction with a planned unit development. Questions or comments from members of the council? End to Item Eight, a request to ratify the revised expenditure plan for the 2009 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Recovery Allocation for 2009-10 Fund 52500 and authorize the city manager or his designee to process all documents required for the program administration. End to Item Nine, request to approve an engagement letter from Meyer Hoffman McCann, PC, an independent CPA firm, for professional auditing services for fiscal year 0910. End to Item Ten, request to appropriate an additional $199,000 to the 2009-10 SIP and amend the service provider agreement with Parsons, Brinker, Hoff, Quaid, and Douglas for added design tasks and increase the not-to-exceed amount by $199,000 for the La Mesa Road-Nesqually It is for the La Mesa interchange. Do you wish to be heard, Mr. Laws? Please come to the podium and state your name and ask your question.
This is the one that the whole pipeline has holes falling in and everything else that we have all the barricades up for, right?
This would be the interchange...
La Mesa between the 15 freeway all the way down to wherever, a few blocks down, right?
Mesa Road-Nesqually Road-I-15 interchange.
Right. So these are the pipes we're going to replace, the old ones that are falling apart or whatever's happening. Is that correct?
I'll let the city manager...
The... This interchange, yes, it's La Mesa on one side, it's Nesqually on the easterly side. And the current... Sean McGlade, the city engineer, is currently making all the corrections right where the interchange will be. The rest of it will be improved, but it's not a part of the interchange project.
Oh, okay. So this is for eventual over freeway pass?
Yes.
Is what this is for?
Yes, it is.
Okay. The only thing I'm concerned about right now is between that other side of the freeway. I want to know how soon it's going to cost us and how soon it's going to be repaired. And if it can't get repaired in another six months, then I would suggest we borrow from the National Guard a nice bridge to put over one of the streets, main streets everybody uses. National Guard can do that.
I'll meet with you right after this meeting and give you all that information.
All right. You're going to stay afterwards? Huh? I'll talk to you afterwards. Thank you.
Motion would be in order?
Oh, we did.
There's a motion, second.
End to Item Eleven, request to approve expenditures related to the natural gas infrastructure installations required to serve Dr. Pepper Snapple in the amount of $84,010. End to Item Twelve, request for direction from the council regarding bringing to the city council a cooperative agreement with the town of Apple Valley and the county for the final design of the Green Tree Boulevard, bridge and road extension, Yeh's Road widening, and the Yucca Loma Road and Bridge, and utilizing a $1 million federal CM AQ grant available through Sandbag. Questions or comments from members of the council?
Mr. Mayor and council, we ask that this be continued. We have several meetings that have been scheduled with technical staff in regard to the grants and some matching funds. Those meetings are... We've had a couple of meetings. We're going to have more meetings, including this Friday, and I believe next Tuesday. We request that this be continued so that we would have more complete information at that time.
But I do have one card from Richard and Linda Crook with regard to Agenda Item Twelve. Do you want to discuss it now, or do you want to wait for it to come back as a formal agenda item? Come back? All right. We have your card, and we'll make sure that you're communicated correctly. End to Item Twelve will be continued. Do we have a date certain, Mr. Cox?
We should be ready by the next council meeting, so we can continue to the next council meeting, which I... May 4? May 4?
Can you decide him to the next regularly scheduled council meeting on May 4? Did you get that date, Mr. and Mrs. Crook? Okay. End to Item Thirteen. Then to item 13. Again, Mr. Laws, Mr. Laws, for the record.
Pardon me?
For the record, please state your name.
Oh, Jerry Laws. Anyway, are we, almost got this squabble pretty well secured on this rain tree, green tree thing and the pass for Apple Valley and everything else? Is that getting secured?
That's why we're meeting.
I know that, but I mean, we're finally getting to the point where it's actually going to be taken care of?
I believe so, yes.
All right, well, I have faith in you.
Then to item 13, proposed resolution 10034, which would declare the intention to grant a franchise to CalNav Pipeline LLC to use and occupy city streets. Questions or comments from members of the council? Motion would be in order?
I have one, I have a comment, Mr. Mayor, if I could. I didn't look at this until tonight. I do not believe that this is a service area for CalNav. I believe it is the franchise merely to use and serve for streets because they specifically state how the franchise fees will be paid. The state code provides two methods, one is per user, one is by use of streets. Assuming that there are no users, this would be correct. It would be modified in the future if they ever serve someone else because of the demand for the gas. As long as that's on the record, we, our staff recommends approval.
Any other questions or comments?
Move for approval, resolution 10-034.
Then to item 14, is request to appoint a council member as the city delegate to the SCAG General Assembly. Anybody want to volunteer?
I volunteer, Ryan.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Have a good time, Ryan.
Can't we appoint someone who's not here? I mean, isn't that generally how it works?
You didn't speak fast enough.
I know, I know, I actually volunteered for this, so.
Item 15 is reports from council members. Mr. McAcorin?
I have none this evening.
Bowman?
None, thank you.
I have none. Mr. Cox, do you have anything further?
No, I do not.
If you wish to share. That concludes the council agenda for tonight. We will stand adjourned to the next regularly scheduled council meeting, May 4th. Thank you all for being here.
Did he get the record?
Hi, Nancy, how are you?
Full dip, know what potential can come from development in that area. I know we have approved.